I call this March 4th, 2025, meeting of the Radford City School Board to order. Please join me in a moment of silence. And now I'm going to ask McCargh students Wyatt and Maya if they will come up and lead us in the pledge. You'll probably see them again. See guys, that's why it gets right over here, sorry. Or you can look at it on the screen.
Let allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you so much. We'll see you again in just a few minutes, okay? I'm sure everyone has had an opportunity to review the agenda, but before I ask for a motion to approve the agenda, I would like to suggest to my fellow board members that the item referred to as Division Superintendent Contract, under the Action Items heading, be moved to our Personal Items to be addressed during closed session. So I will now entertain a motion to adopt the agenda as I've just amended it.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, wonderful. Okay.
Thank you, Madam Chairperson. Tonight, as part of our school and student showcase, I'd like to welcome to the podium Mr. Ken Keister, Principal at McCargh Elementary School, and he has some special guests and a special presentation for us. Thank you.
Yes, I am excited to introduce two of our spectacular Bobcats that we have at McCargh. So if Wyatt Gill and Maya Alfred could come back up to the podium. So we have been very busy since we got back to school from Christmas break, especially the days that we were actually in school. And so I have, we would like to tell you about some of the events that we were able to do. So at this time, I'm going to turn it over to Maya and Wyatt.
Hi, my name is Maya Alfred and I am in second grade, in Ms. Penn's class.
Hello, my name is Wyatt Gill and I am also in second grade and I am in Ms. Monty's class.
Recently, we had a couple of really fun events that we would like to share with you. The first event we would like to share with you is winter fun day. We had to save our key cast to participate.
We did rotations around the school for the first half of the day. Some of the activities included yoga in the library, building towers out of kebab planks, in the cafeteria, and in the gym, we built towers out of Lula Loops and blocks. The best part about making the towers in the gym, we got to knock them down and then rebuild it.
The second half of the day was spend in our classroom. And we spend most of our time building. We build towers out of plastic cups, towers out of Play-Doh and sticks. We used connects to build. And we also made towers out of marshmallows and toothpicks.
The second event we just held last week, the event was to celebrate finishing our one school book. As a school, we read Friendship According to Humphrey. We did a chapter every day and we had a question of the day each morning on our morning announcements. If we got the answer correct and our names picked, we got a prize.
At the ordinary night, we could go to different stations throughout the building, which included a glow room that Ms. Gout put together. Each grade level made a different sea animal out of different materials. There was a station where we were able to pet a snake. In the gym, we could build a bridge that Humphrey would be able to walk across. That one of the stations, we could make friendship races. Maybe the best part of the night was the popcorn from the cafeteria.
We also had a former teacher from Radford High School, Frank Taylor, make a video about hamster specials for McCargh. He has a channel on YouTube called Nature at Your Door. You should check it out.
This week, we are celebrating, are read across America to celebrate. So let's celebrate. We are having Spirit Week.
We've already had pajama day and bobcat day. For the rest of the week, we have color day, hat day, and the last day, we will wear tropical clothes for spring break.
So as you can see, we've had a very busy last couple of months here. And I don't know if you've paid attention to the screen here, but we've had some of the pictures. A lot of the pictures are from our One School One book. And there's a video of the glow room that Ms. Gout put in, which was pretty special. And she's going to do a small little glow area down at Glenco Museum. They're doing the art exhibition down there. So stop down there and check it out if you weren't able to see it in real life here at McCargh, so.
You guys did an excellent job. What a great place to be. Thank you for sharing.
Thank you, Mr. Keister. All right, we're going to jump up a few schools and welcome Mr. Simpson from the high school to, I'm sorry, who?
Colin. Mr. Barron.
Oh, you want him to go first? No, no, he's fine. There he is, Colin Barron. Come on up for our regular installment of All Things Radford High School. Thank you.
All things RHS indeed. Now, good evening, first of all. Two pages tonight.
Nice.
Because as I said last meeting, Radford High School was going to come back with lots of victories and triumphs. And luckily, I was very, very right. More right than I imagined. We have so much to cover today, so let's just dive right in. Last, dropped a pen. Last Friday, we had a Black History Month presentation in the auditorium, and it beautifully highlighted the true meaning of Black History Month, which is accepting and embracing our cultures and knowing where we came from, what makes us who we are today. Students are soon entering the fourth quarter of school at the end of March, so RHS is beginning to prepare for the scary AP tests and SOL tests. But Radford High School is going in more confident than ever, and we take our education very, very seriously and working hard, very hard, to succeed on these final tests. Now into sports news, and this is hefty, so just get ready. RHS, as always, is dominating in their different activities. Radford Boys and Girls Swim and Dive Teams both placed as the runner-ups in the state competition and had many first-place winners. The winners include Evie Grimm, Jill Grimm, Trent Hollensworth, Ben Maranero, Ian Mayer, and Sam Cannon-Barrani. Our Wrestling Team recently competed in states as well, where Taven Williams and Cole Martin were awarded first place in individual state championships in boys wrestling. And Maggie Page placed third overall in the state for girls wrestling. The indoor track members are competing in the state track meet tomorrow and Thursday, and there are many students going to compete in individual events. There is Cora Mosby, Essek Williams, Mustafa Mohammed, Raylan Adams, Abby Castleberry, and Javier Wade. MAC, our Mountain Academic Competition Conference Team, has recently competed in the regional competition. They did very well, but specifically, they took the competition with a victory in social studies. And now, they are competing in SuperMAC as we speak, to see if they will be the Mountain Academic Conference Champions. The RHS Forensics Speech and Debate Team recently competed in the superregional competition, where they were runner-ups to Lebanon High School and had plenty of individual placers. These placers include Barron and Fisher, Barron and Rife in our duo categories. And the individual competitors include Catherine Wensky, Jackson Barnett, Frankie Jones, Kate DeShawn, and Mickey Barron. These students are all on their way to the Salem State Competition at the month's end. Kate Rackaway, Caroline Pappas, and Olivia Spalding are also our alternates from our superregion. Lots and lots of victories, so congratulations to Radford High School there. In some other news, the Bobcat Choirs are preparing for their choir assessments at the end of this month. And these assessments will determine the level of the choir compared to other choirs in our area. And we hope to continue receiving the superior rating, which is the best rating you can get. Lastly, I would like to take a minute to relay some words from the RHS Yearbook Department. There is no greater way to document RHS history than through our yearbook, the RHS Oak Leaf. This year celebrates the 100th, yes, that is right, the 100th edition of the Oak Leaf. This year especially, we would like all students to be able to receive a yearbook, but unfortunately, yearbooks can be pricey. The yearbook team asks for board members, staff, or community members that are willing to contribute or pay for some yearbooks, to please consider donating some money. The Oak Leaf this year costs $80, and donors can choose which student they would like to sponsor. If no student is specified, however, the yearbook will be given to students, starting from seniors and working their way down to the freshmen. And we would very much love for every student to have a copy of the yearbook, especially considering that this is the 100th copy, the big, big spectacular yearbook. If anyone is interested, you can send cash or a check to the RHS building, and please make sure to address it to Amber Sowers or Tina Young. To order online, make sure to go to yearbookordercenter.com and use code 13971 when ordering a yearbook. Radford continues to prove itself as a force to be reckoned with, not just academically, but athletically and as a student body. Since coming back at the beginning of the quarter and just throughout the semester, the student life at RHS has just seemed so much more united, and everyone just starts to agree and trust each other. So, in the spirit of Radford High School, I would like to relay a couple of things that have been going on, a couple of words that have been used. Show mercy to each other, be kind to one another, and listen, because in life, we're all we have. So, I don't know, just a little bit of, I'm getting a little bit emotional right now, because I just love my school. I love my school. Thank you guys for letting me come out and speak on behalf of the high school tonight, and as always, go Bobcats. Thank you, guys.
Thank you. Okay, Mr. Simpson. Tough act to follow. I'm sure we'll be okay.
Yeah, I know, following Colin Barron, man, it's tough. Good evening, board members and Dr. Joyce. I'm here to provide an overview of our transition, planned transition to block schedule. So you have a copy of the slides, and I would just like to, it's a lot of information, so I'll try to be thorough, but not too long. And if you have any questions throughout, feel free to stop me and let me know. All right, so my goal is to provide a timeline, detail the process that our staff has gone through in making this decision. I will also go over what we perceive to be the pros of transitioning to block schedule for students and for our school, and then talk about what our next steps are to prepare for next year. So the first slide here talks about the timeline. You can see that it starts in June. This was before I joined Radford officially, but I did come to this meeting. Dr. Reddick is nationally renowned scheduling expert from JMU. So he came and met with several division leaders to talk about scheduling models. I was able to come for half of that meeting as an invite before I was officially on board at Radford City. But he's very knowledgeable. He goes through the entire history of high school scheduling and why folks choose different schedules, and so that was very informative. In July, I come on board as the head principal and talked to division leadership about some of those conversations that were already taking place and what we're looking at in the fall, and would we consider a change or not. In August, as you know, the state changed their accountability system. And so that definitely is a factor as we look to how we're going to be measured, the types of metrics they're going to be using, including the three E's, and how that factors in and how a block schedule might be a better fit for that accountability system. So we formed a scheduling committee. There was teachers represented from all departments across the school. That committee met twice in November, November 7th and 25th. In the subsequent slides, you'll see a little bit more of what that committee did, but I can share more details if you'd like. So then we also have the building leadership team. That team meets once a month. That's made up of all the department heads. So the scheduling committee and the BLT were, there was some overlap in those teachers, but it was, they were separate teams. So I wanted BLT to have some input as well. So essentially, they went through a very similar process as our scheduling committee. They gave their input as well. Factored all that, took all that input, read every word, had folks come talk to me, lots of conversations about scheduling. And ultimately, as an admin team and division leadership team, we did decide we are going to move to block schedule. That was announced at the December faculty meeting. So as I'll show again in future slides, that was a decision to move to some form of block. There's several different types. We considered three specifically, which I can talk to you about. And then after a month of examples and discussion, the staff ultimately voted on which form of block they wanted to go. And so again, I have some slides on that coming up. So as that scheduling committee met on the first, the first meeting, we did not talk any about what, which scheduling model. We just wanted to say, okay, as we look at what our schedule is going to be next year, what should be our priorities? What do we care about as a school? And what do we want to accomplish? What's the best fit for our kids, for our community? What do we want to look at? So we had a list of priorities, and then we also had a list of what we called other factors to consider. You know, maybe it wasn't a priority, but it's a logistical thing that matters when you're building a schedule. So there was a list. Each one of these had 20, 20 priorities, 20 other factors to consider. At the second meeting, I sent out a Google Form to all the committee members, and we voted on, okay, what are the, what are the things that we care most about? What are our top priorities? What are the top other factors? So on these slides, it shows that these were our top priorities. Continuity of instruction, student workload, flexibility of matching scheduling format to unique needs of diverse programs, taking into account our elective program, CTE, maximizing or increasing opportunities for credentials. And that's where you see in parentheses the three E's related to the new accountability model. And we said, if we are going to make a change, we need to make sure that we prioritize professional development so that we prepare teachers for the change. And then other factors to consider, these were more kind of logistical things that we wanted to think about. How are we going to share staff between the buildings? We know that some eighth graders come up and take high school classes. How do we make that work? You know, we know that we're going from, we would be going from 47 minutes to close to 90. So how do we capture student attention? How do we make sure that we keep them engaged in their learning? Other organizational factors about transitions, how to handle students who fail in a year-long format, and supporting students with disabilities. So these are kind of what the committee said we should focus on the most when making a decision. Throughout that process, we had 15 teachers across all departments involved, five school administrators, three counselors, three central office members, student leaders, students from every grade level, and we talked to New River and RVCS to all weigh in and get their, there are different lenses on, okay, what should we think about when we think about scheduling? And so, so after taking all that input, this was like the decision in December, okay? After taking all that consideration, we said, we feel like block scheduling is the best fit. And I'll explain some more when we get into the pros. And that's where we made that decision and announced that to the staff. And when I talked about that in the December faculty meeting, we need to look ahead. We need to look at the road ahead, what our students need moving forward. We do have this new accountability model. We do have students right now that are seniors who are struggling to get all the credits that they need for graduation. And we want our students to be as competitive as possible when they apply to colleges. And we want them to have the top offerings available, just be competitive with other schools across the state. So we know that in the rearview mirror, there's things like, we've had a different schedule for the past five years. And so we're aware of that and the fact that that's a lot of change and that's difficult. But the idea is to look ahead and say, how can we make the best decision forecasting forward? And let's make that decision for our kids and for their future. So ultimately, it comes down to why, okay? So why have we made that decision? So it comes down to pros for students, for teachers, and for our overall school success. So let's talk about pros for students for a little bit. So right now, students can earn seven credits a year. Block schedule allows them to earn eight credits per school year. We have, teachers right now teach five out of seven in their, in their course load. Block schedule allows them to teach six out of eight. So if you take 50 teachers who teach courses, that's now 50 extra sections you're able to offer, which is where the, through the course catalog, the new course proposals, that's how we have the capacity to teach some of those extra DE, CTE, AP classes. And not all of them, some are just electives that departments have said, hey, we've wanted to teach creative writing before. We've wanted to teach this class, piano lab, we haven't been able to. So this adds the capacity. Students will have fewer courses per semester. They're only focusing on four classes at a time versus seven simultaneous classes. That can really help with their workload. And we can also balance the core and elective. So instead of taking all of my core classes all at once, I could take two core, two elective in the fall, two core, two elective in the spring, and just provide a little more balance for students. And then doubling up. So that can be used for a student who's behind and needs to catch up to their cohort. If they failed a class or they, they didn't take an opportunity to accelerate earlier in their high school career, they can catch up. Or if they just want to accelerate, they can do that. So that means if you want to take Spanish 1 and 2 in the same school year, you can. If you want to take Algebra 1 and Geometry in the same school year. If you want to take two levels of CTE, you can do that. So it just adds that flexibility for kids to double up. If a student fails English 9, they could take English 9 in the fall, English 10 in the spring, and be caught up to their peers. Whereas in a year-long format, it's more difficult to do that. Pros for teachers. Right now, teachers get 47 minutes of planning per day. Under a block model, they would have 80 to 90 minutes of planning every single day. They also would have a reduced course load. If I'm a English teacher and I have five simultaneous classes, I could be taking home 125 papers to grade. Under a block system, you're more likely to have closer to 75. So 75 in the fall, 75 in the spring, but simultaneously, you're only, you're grading fewer. And also increased instructional time, and this is a huge point. When we talk about providing high-quality instruction, talking about keeping students' attention, this is definitely something to consider. If teachers are planning to lecture for 90 minutes, that's probably going to be pretty boring. So the idea on a block schedule is you can't, you can't just stand and deliver. You have to, you have to mix it up. You have to provide engaging opportunities. If I'm a science teacher, I now have time to do a full lab, whereas in the past, I might have to do half the lab one day, leave it set up overnight, do the second half the next day. Our teachers do projects, hands-on projects. It really provides that extended learning time. For a more traditional classroom like math, you'd be able to teach, do practice, and then pull kids and do individualized or small group instruction for kids who are struggling, provide that built-in remediation and support for students. So it can, it can be done very well. And before I move forward, this is always a good thing to say, there's no perfect schedule. And you can have high-quality instruction on a 47-minute day, and you can have high-quality instruction on a 90-minute period. So really, it comes down to the quality of the teacher and the instruction, which we know we have. So we're confident that our teachers will be able to do this very well. And then for our school, pointing back to that accountability model, it really does, the three E's, employment, enlistment, and enrollment, will allow more opportunities for students to earn points in that area, to get the CTE credentials that they need, to earn more DE and AP points for the school, which also benefits them as students. We will be able to split up SOL testing. When you talk about that, that load, you know, freshmen, they usually take three SOL tests, math, science, and social studies, all in May. This would allow for some of that testing to occur in the fall, some of it to occur in the spring. Kind of breaks up that load. And also allows us to, to remediate if kids are not successful on those SOL tests. It gives us two test administrations. Right now, for example, Algebra Parts is delivered in two years. Kids will take Algebra 1 Part 1 as a freshman, Algebra 1 Part 2 as a sophomore. It's pretty, it's about as slow as you can take Algebra in high school. So what double-blocking Algebra Parts allows us to do is that they finish that sequence as a freshman, which is much, much better instructionally. They're going to get 90 minutes of math every single day and be able to complete that sequence their freshman year. It allows some other, we're going to have to decide based on the registration numbers. We could do something where we know kids might, that they struggled in Earth Science, let's say. We could put them in Environmental Science in the fall and Biology in the spring to better prepare them for that spring Biology SOL test. So it allows for flexible moves like that. Credit recovery, already talked about. If a student fails, they can, they can double up to catch up with their peers. And also, a lot of, a lot of students, a lot of schools in our local area are on block. So this has happened, right? They come to us mid-year, and they've already earned credits in the fall, and then we have to try to pigeonhole them into a year-long class where really, you know, they're halfway through and they, the school they were coming from was on block. So being on block helps us be consistent with those in our area. We've talked about this. These are all the AP and DE offerings we were able to add this school year, or for next school year. And kids are signing up for those right now. All right, so when we, we made the decision for block, these were the three models that we considered. And we did take a lot of input. We had, we had Google Meet, it's not Google Meet, Google Form, where students, teachers provided their input on all the different models. And one thing was very clear, AB block was not a good fit for us. What that means is four classes on A days, four classes on B days. They're all year-long. So essentially, you weren't getting the benefit from the semester format, and you were adding that kids were taking eight simultaneous classes instead of seven. So we felt that's actually adding more work on teachers and kids. There are some pros to A day, B day, but based on the input we saw, we said, okay, we're going to eliminate that. And that's where we talked more about four-by-four and hybrid. We created mock master schedules in all three formats. So if you click that link, I was very clear, these are drafts. It doesn't say what you're teaching next year. But we took the registration numbers from last year and just kind of superimposed them on what we would be able to offer next year. And here's what it could look like, and we allowed teachers to look at that. How would it impact my own course load? How would it impact my department? Help inform their decision. They had about a month to mull it over, have conversations with their colleagues, talk to me, whatever they wanted to do. And ultimately, they voted in mid-January with those two options, between four-by-four and hybrid. And 78% of the staff picked four-by-four semester block. And so hybrid would allow some of the year-long classes to exist, but ultimately, the staff wanted that, that traditional four-by-four block. Okay, so like we said earlier, there is no perfect schedule. And so making this change, we realize it's not just flip the switch and you're ready. There's things to consider. So there's things that we talked about a lot. First of all, if you, if you look at the average, the total number of instructional minutes, you are losing about six minutes a day in the classes. But the trade-off of that is that time that you're taking, you're able to offer an entirely new course, right? So there, so trade-off in the daily instruction versus what you're able to offer overall in the schedule. We realize that in a semester format, you're moving more quickly to be able to accomplish that in a semester. The good news about that is that in our CIP network, many of the schools in that, in that network are on block, and they've already developed pacing guides. So they have year-long pacing guides and semester block. We would not be starting from scratch. Those resources are out there to help support our teachers. Students who are absent miss more content, but in a lesser number of classes. So there's a trade-off too, you know? I'm missing longer classes, but I'm missing four versus now, if I miss, I'm missing seven. So those are just trade-offs in the different models. One thing that came up over and over and over again, which I'll share more about in a second, is the need for professional development. Like I said, we have schools that we know and our colleagues that teach on the block currently. Like I said, we have schools that we know and our colleagues that teach on the block currently. We have some things planned. We have presentation speakers coming in. I think I have another slide for that. And we also wanted to be cognizant of Dalton Intermediate. We didn't want to leave Mr. Freeman out here to dry. So he joined our scheduling committee meetings, him and Ms. Saunders. And we talked about, well, how could this work? You know, how could we, if they stay on seven-period day and we moved a block, how could we mesh those two? When we share teachers and kids. And it can be done. We were talking about that this week, actually. So professional development, also sent out a survey to staff to say, we can do all kinds of PD. What, what types would you prefer, right? So I had a list of fifteen maybe different choices. The top choices were guest speakers, visiting schools to observe, reading some articles, and doing book studies. And so that's what we're, that's what our goal is. So that form on the right, I don't expect you to be able to read it, but every teacher got that, and that's a way for them to track their PD work so that they can earn professional development points. Essentially, everyone's going to earn five points because there's extra work involved. You have to adjust your materials, you have to redo pacing guides, that kind of thing. For that work, we're acknowledging, hey, for that time, five points for everybody across the top. And then we have three faculty meetings, pre, already scheduled faculty meetings, that we're going to invite guest speakers to come in. So we have a workshop on the April first day. And then we have two more faculty meetings where we have high-quality speakers to come in about, to talk about formative assessment on the block, student engagement, how we can do the very best instruction in these models. And then two of the speakers are going to offer a follow-up day. So everyone's going to get ten points, but then there's going to be some optional PD. Hey, we have more. There's school visits if you want. We're not going to force everyone to do that. I forgot to mention in that survey, fifteen of our teachers said, I don't need any additional PD. Maybe those folks already taught on block. Or they just know, well, I know how to make those instructional adjustments. It doesn't mean that we're not going to, we're still going to provide them with some, but they already feel pretty comfortable making the change. So we wanted to provide some flexibility. If you want more PD, it's out there. But we're going to talk about some things with the whole staff. All right, so I think what I have, what I have left here are some examples. That's a lot of information. I can show you, I have student examples and teacher examples. And that was all included in, in all the, the committee and scheduling conversations that we had. But what questions do you have at this point?
Do you feel like our students are comfortable with the scheduling that they're doing? That they understand the objective and all of that, Ms. Mosley?
Well, we have a lot of students here that can provide some feedback. I felt like I got good feedback from you all when I went to your classrooms. But this is the time that, you know, if you feel differently than that, but I think they got excited about some new courses and what opportunities they have.
I would estimate I spoke to twenty to thirty students, just different, different. I wanted to get different grade levels informally, and it was kind of all over the map. You know, and we talked about the different scheduling models. Some really liked it, some didn't like our current model, some were excited about blocks, some weren't, so. I don't know. You can if you want to.
I guess my big thing was I was nervous I wasn't going to be able to, like, stay focused for ninety minutes. Because I struggle enough to do it for fifty minutes, or forty-seven, I guess. But now that we've kind of explained it, saying how half will be instruction, half will be one-on-one work, it makes me feel a little bit more confident in that schedule. And we're also offering more classes, so we're able to take more and go ahead and get these classes underway.
Right. And again, the idea would be, we would expect there to be some instructional change from our teachers that, okay, you can't use, necessarily use that same approach.
Absolutely. What about, I sometimes get questions about continuity of instruction?
Sure.
For foreign language, for example?
Sure, sure. So that would be, I would say, under that, uh, other factors to consider. That is one of the trade-offs of block. So you can help mitigate that some. As we build a schedule, I will definitely talk to our departments very closely and say, hey, how do we want to structure this? So what you're referencing, I believe, is if I take Spanish one as, in the fall as a freshman, and I don't take Spanish two until my, the spring of my sophomore year, then there's a gap there. So, so yes. However, we all know that summer slide exists. And we always, we always review at the beginning of all of our classes, right? So if I took Spanish one as a full-year class last year, and then I started again as a sophomore, we're still going to have that review period. Teachers are going to have to go into it knowing, okay, some kids will have had more of a gap and account for that. To say, okay, well, where are you? They might have to do a little bit extra review at the beginning. But there's also some things you can do structurally to help avoid that. Like we might try to say, okay, we're going to try to put a lot of our Spanish ones in the spring and a lot of our Spanish twos in the fall, right? So you can try to help look at your numbers and build it in such a way that, knowing that it might, for some students, that might happen. But to try to avoid that in some cases. So, but that's a good question.
So when talking to the community, I know that a lot of people were worried about teacher feedback. But listening to you, it sounds like you had a lot of input from the teachers.
I mean, this might be an exaggeration, but I think I talked to every teacher in the building about scheduling.
Yeah, that's fantastic.
And if somebody didn't, it wasn't because I wasn't, didn't make myself available. It might just be that they didn't want to have that conversation. But again, I could be wrong. I just feel like anyone who wanted to have that conversation with me did. And we didn't always fully agree on everything, but we were able to talk through it. And I just know how I will go about making the decisions and what, what's taught when. And we're not going to leave anybody out to dry. We're going to make sure that the teacher input is continued to, so that I will continue to listen to that throughout the process. Because sometimes I don't know. I will say, well, truly, when, you know, when would you like to have this class? You know, Ms. Givens might say, oh, I want to do horticulture in the spring because it's, it's better for my flower sale. Or whatever. There's some, there's some logistical things that I might not know fully. It's a big high school with diverse programs. So I'll, I will definitely talk to teachers throughout the process.
There was a question about Governor's School.
Okay, sure.
Somebody had mentioned that in the past, that Governor's School would have, you know, Governor's School in the morning, and then two AP classes in the afternoon, and that was really tough for them. So I'm sure you looked at Governor's School. So what, what's it looking like on your end?
Yeah, correct. So with the time, with the timing, they would, they would arrive back at RHS about midway through third block, right? So they would have a class in the fall. So they would, I think they take three classes in the morning. So in the afternoon, they would take, uh, we could do something with that time. That could just be a study hall if they want when they come back. Or they could be enrolled, maybe in a virtual class that they're taking online. And then fourth block, they would have one class in the fall, one class in the spring. So they're still taking the same number of, right now, they arrive for sixth and seventh period.
Right.
So they get three in the morning, two in the afternoon. So it would be the same, same number of credits that they're earning.
Thank you.
Couple things first. Thank you, Simpson, for making the presentation.
Sure.
Sounds like, like most of us, we've heard a lot of why. Why are we making the changes? As you even, you know, alluded to, there's been five changes in as many years.
Sure.
So, you know, the question naturally came up at the twelfth hour. I appreciate your presentation, because I think it answered the majority of those questions I had. I was actually checking them off as we went through. So I certainly appreciate you answering those questions. Couple things that I, I do want to get some clarification on, just to be sure. Much as Amanda had alluded to, students, what I'm hearing is there's concerns from students who are in the high school already, possibly juniors or seniors, who are in dual enrollment or AP classes, who are struggling with the opportunity to get the courses they need to complete their degree that they've selected. How are we handling, I know there's largely one-off sort of situations, but can we make those a priority and assure people those are a priority for placement in those classes? To make sure we have that degree completion without negatively impacting the students or their families? That was a loaded question. I apologize for that.
No, yes, absolutely. I've not, I'm not sure I fully understand. We, when we schedule, we look at our, kind of our neatest students first and, and fill those in. And then we start at seniors and work backwards. So they get priority in the scheduling process, knowing they have to meet their diploma requirements. Block schedule actually allows for an additional course. So if they're not able to, to complete it, this model gives them more options and also more time slots in their day to fulfill that. Some slides I took out because there were some student examples that I blurred out their names when I talked about the staff. But when I was answering the question why, there was, I think, four or five just screenshots of kid, kids' current schedules. And without going into too much detail, you're able to see how you're limited in a year-long format. And you're limited in the number of courses you're able to offer. Like we had a screenshot for one of our highest-end students who's taking four or five virtual classes currently. Because we don't have the capacity to offer those. And I even talked with this student, said, wouldn't you like to have been able to take these classes with one of our instructors? And she said, yes, absolutely. And so, you know, so on the high end, I think we were missing some of our top, top kids' needs. And then on the lower end, we have some students who struggle. And, and at the time, you know, it was January, and kids really struggling and failing a class with a thirty percent. What are our options for a student in a year-long format that has a thirty percent? You're pretty limited. You're in a year-long, we can already, we kind of know, hey, they might not pass this class, but we got to wait till May. We, we don't just do that. We have other things. But, but it's like a credit recovery program that's virtual, which is also not great. In a block format, we could say, well, hey, you didn't make it first semester. We can put you right back in that class with one of our teachers and provide high-quality instruction. So some of that why comes down from just observation and seeing how seven-period day is, is limited in some ways.
And I do appreciate you also, one thank you for that. I know the question was completely, well, on.
No, it's okay.
But, you know, it sounds like, to answer to the parents and those who did pose that to me, it does sound like we're making a priority for the students who have degree completion needs.
Absolutely.
To ensure that there's no loss there whatsoever.
Yeah, correct. And our, our counselors have credit check sheets, and they go through, and that's, start with seniors and work backwards, right?
And I'm glad to hear you also mentioned the inclusion of the hybrid students, you know, who are taking classes because we do have a wonderful resource with our online partners.
Correct.
To say, you know, we're mighty, but not always big. But we have that partnership that makes us mighty and large with our online courses. To say, yes, we can offer French four, we just do it in a hybrid environment.
Right.
Glad to hear that there's a provision being made there. Yes, much like our friends over at New River at the Governor's School. The schedules don't necessarily line up, but we're understanding that, being empathetic to that. So I appreciate that as well.
Sure.
Lastly, this is going to be the big one. You ready?
Sure.
What assurance can you give us and the community that we're not going to make a change again next year?
Hundred percent. Dr. Joyce? I don't think we would make a change. I mean, first of all, even if there were pickups or, I don't think that the answer is to make a knee-jerk reaction and to, and to switch. But I'm confident that it's going to serve our students well. And, and I think if you did that and then changed back, you would create a whole nother set of problems. So I, I don't see that happening at all.
And that's, that's where I'm at, because largely, and again, not like any of your doorstep or anyone else, really. But ultimately, that's, the things that I'm hearing, the things that I'm seeing, we've said before very confidently, we're going at this time, we're going to stick to it.
Right.
Oh, by the way, it's a new year.
Sure.
It's a new schedule.
Sure. All right, yes, sir.
Thank you, sir. I appreciate the.
Thank you.
So in fairness, a lot of those schedule changes were because of the pandemic. And everything got a little wanky. You know, so I think Mr. Simpson and I have agreed that it may take you a few times to get it right. And coming out of the pandemic, and we wanted to make sure that, that the schedule that we landed on was the best schedule. You know, sometimes I come out of my closet five times with five different neckties on. But when I settle on one, that's the one I go with. Because we've gone this many times trying to get it right. He and I decided, with a lot of other input, that this seems to be the schedule that's best going to fit our needs moving forward.
This is our fifth tie for the day, so I'm saying, let's wear it.
I agree.
Barring we spill anything at lunch, we need to wear this size.
That's, that's the plan.
Is this going to involve changes to bell schedule? I mean, beginning and ending bell schedule? Are you going to address that?
Beyond my pay grade, I believe. But everything that, everything we've mapped out has been seven-fifty to two-twenty, you know, within those parameters, so.
So I'll talk about that with the calendar.
Okay.
But no, that is, we are trying to keep that as consistent as possible. So really, change is just what's happening within that day, not when it starts or when it ends. We're keeping consistency there.
Okay.
The, the other slides are just student examples. So we, we did one from each grade level and then several teacher examples of what their, what their preps would look like, what their schedule would look like.
Are you confident with this small timeframe, you have to put this together, that it's going to work?
That's a good question. And in fact, that came out in some, some of our conversations. And my answer is yes. You know, I, a suggestion was made, should we take another year and, and make this decision? I think that that would delay the benefits of block schedule. I think of another group of kids that aren't seeing the benefits of it. And with all the conversations that we had, you know, I don't know if, there's not some research-based that I know of that's going to say, well, hey, moving to block is going to increase your student achievement by ten points. This is just not the case. High-quality instruction and high-quality teachers are going to do that. So there is no perfect schedule, but we, we felt pretty confident. We, we've looked at all the details as closely as we can. And delaying it a year, we felt like we would end up with the same decision, and we would have delayed it. And in my mind, that means a whole group of current juniors and seniors, let's say, miss some of those benefits. And so I wanted to make the right choice now for our kids we have now.
I would just hope that when school starts back, that, that there would be faculty meetings devoted to, you know, what, what are the problems?
Sure.
What would be good ways to solve that?
Sure.
So there's that follow-up.
And one of our teachers mentioned that, as we were talking about PD, most people wanted, okay, yeah, right now, spring, maybe some, some summer opportunities. And one teacher said, well, maybe we don't even know until we get there. So can we have some in the fall? In fact, one of our speakers, who's coming in April, is going to come back in August. And then it would make sense to maybe have some September and October continuing conversation. I'm an instruction guy, like to talk about instruction, so we'll continue doing that. And, and I think we will learn from each other as well.
And you're also not afraid of the scheduling aspect as far as power school? And I've heard you talk before that it's kind of, it's something you look forward to?
Yeah, a little bit nerdy about that. I enjoy the process. It's kind of like a puzzle. And, and I like to make sure that we're meeting the needs of all of our kids, but also taking the input. Not that you can always make everyone happy, but we want to, to make sure that we're doing what's best for our teachers and our students. So, yeah, no, I, I feel, I have some experience scheduling, and I don't have any concerns about that.
So at our last meeting, the issue of tardies came up.
Yes.
So do you mind while you're there? Updating us on what you have in mind?
Absolutely. So this, like I said, our building leadership team meets once a month. So this was added to the agenda, and so we talked about it yesterday afternoon with the acknowledgement of, hey, this, this is an issue. You know, we need to address this with our students. Kids are coming in late to school, they're late to class. How can we together work on this? And, and also acknowledging that administrators, we might not have the best answer. What do you all think? And we discussed it. So after some discussion, sent out an email today about how we're going to handle tardies for the rest of the year. So essentially, the way it had been working is that each assistant principal has their caseload, and they were tracking all the tardies and then calling students down and addressing them. After they reach a certain number, they get consequences. That proves to be pretty difficult. You know, if you, if you're dealing with this behavior problem over here, you're trying to observe instruction, or you're doing these other things, the tardies naturally might fall to the, the back burner, to be honest. And so that's something that's hard to keep up with. So we've asked for the teachers' help with that. So starting in the, we'll talk about the fourth quarter. So starting in the fourth quarter, which is March twenty-seventh, everyone goes to zero tardies. And just as far as our tracking purposes. And then teachers will track it in their own class. So if you're tardy to my class three times on the third offense, the teacher's going to assign them a penalty haul. So that way, it's just a much more direct, quick, hey, here's an after-school consequence for being late three times. And that's just to my class. They may have been tardy to other classes too. But that holds the kid accountable, and it's that relationship piece of, you're late to my class, you know? And that conversation between the, the teacher and the student. In between that now and then, so we have about maybe ten school days. We just said, if a student is excessively tardy, please just write them up, and that helps draw it to our attention. And we will handle kind of this gap of maybe some students who are excessively tardy between now and then. And then everyone goes back to zero. And then, starting at three, they'll get the tardy slips. If they get above seven, that also becomes a referral to the office. We, we check that multiple times a day. So if a referral comes in, we know it and we, we act on it. Whereas the tracking on a weekly basis had become, it's kind act on it. Whereas the tracking on a weekly basis had become, it's kind of a, a bear, logistical bear to, to keep on top of. So our plan, so I communicated that to teachers today. And our plan is to push some things out to kids and the, kids and, and, and parents to let them know, hey, this is, this is coming. So.
Thank you.
Does that answer your question?
Yes, sir. Appreciate that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Not a lot of prep time, so thank you. I appreciate the four-by-four update.
Fellow board members, I'm gonna propose that we take an official board action on this item by placing it on our agenda under action items so that we can vote on this new schedule and its bells at the high school. So do I need a motion to do that at this time? I will take a motion to move adoption of the bell of, of the high school schedule change as we, as it has been presented.
So moved.
And is there a second?
Second.
Is there any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
And opposed. So that motion, that, that goes to our action items. Now we go to the consent items. So hopefully you've all had a chance to look those over. Are there any questions about those at all? Then I'll entertain a motion to accept those, these consent items that's presented.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing none, that goes stand approved. All right. At this time, the school board will now hear comments on matters relevant to pre-K-12 public education in Radford City and the business of the school board and the school division from Radford citizens who signed up prior to this meeting. The purpose of the public comment section of the meeting is for the board to offer an orderly forum to receive public comments. We invite all who speak to do so with respect and kindness. Please limit your comments to three minutes or less. All right. And Mr. Dennis Martin, you are next, or first.
Good evening. My name is Dennis Martin. I have been a resident of Radford for the last 13 years. This is my second go-around. The first go-around, I was minister at Radford Christian Church for 13 and a half years. I am used to getting up and talking with a three-point talk for 20 minutes. I have heard what I'm supposed to do and you won't get a 20-minute sermon. I also promise not to try and take up an offering. I serve as a bus driver for Radford City Schools and as a activity bus driver and occasionally some routes. I understand Dr. Joyce will be presenting a budget later, but I'm jumping the gun just a little bit because I didn't know when to do this. Of course, I don't know what's in the budget, but I am asking you to please seriously consider creating two new coaching positions in wrestling. For the sake of transparency, yes, I am the father of the wrestling coach, Dwayne Martin. I have also driven the school bus for the wrestling team for the past six years, including during COVID when we had to ride to every place with all the windows down during the winter. When Coach Martin took over the wrestling program six years ago, he inherited four wrestlers. The season that was just completed between Dalton Intermediate and Radford High School, he had 40 wrestlers. Of those, there were also eight girls, which that program is growing in the state. Dwayne, right now, is the only paid coach for wrestling. He has to depend as much as possible on volunteer coaches who don't get paid but are willing to work. I have thought about acting as a coach and realized, I drive a bus better than I train wrestlers. Last week, for example, Dwayne was in Richmond for two days for the state tournament for girls. He came home, the next night, he left and went to Bristol for two days. And by the way, that tournament lasted from 6:30 in the morning on Saturday to 1 o'clock in the morning on Sunday. For the sake of Coach Martin and in fairness to wrestling students and other students, I am asking you, I am begging you, I would get on my knees, but somebody would have to help me up. Please add some coaching positions in wrestling. I also want to relay to you a belated thank you for the wonderful bleachers at Radford Stadium. They are the best in the state. Thank you for listening to me and thank you for what you do for the students.
Thank you, Mr. Joyce. Right. Next on our list is Olivia Rafford.
Good evening. You may remember me from when I spoke at the last school board meeting in February. I'm Olivia Rafford and I'm one of the many juniors that Mr. Muncie teaches. I stand before you today with a heartfelt plea, one that comes not just from me, but from every student who has had the privilege of learning from Mr. Muncie. His absence has left a void in our classroom, a space that once buzzed with energy, curiosity, and the kind inspiration that makes learning come alive. Mr. Muncie is more than just a teacher. He's a mentor, a motivator, and a guiding light for so many of us. He doesn't just teach lessons from a textbook. He ignites a passion for knowledge, turning confusion into clarity, doubt into confidence, and struggles into triumphs. His classroom was not just a place to learn, but a place where we felt seen, heard, and supported. Through his words and actions, he has taught us not just about English, but about determination, resilience, and the power of believing in ourselves. Without Mr. Muncie, something is missing, not just from our education, but from our daily lives. We know, deep in our hearts, that bringing Mr. Muncie back would mean restoring a vital part of our learning experience, one that has shaped who we are and who we hope to become. Please consider our voices, our experiences, and the impact that Mr. Muncie has on, had on us all. His return wouldn't just benefit us academically. It would inspire us to grow, to strive, and to believe in the power of a great teacher. Thank you for your time, your attention, and for recognizing the importance of a teacher who has changed so many lives. Thank you.
Thank you. Were you timing, Harry, were you timing on that? If you'll just go ahead and do that, because I'm having trouble with this.
That's okay.
And it doesn't sound, okay. Ms. Emma Wakuya.
Good afternoon, school board members, faculty, and staff. I stand before you today with a heart full of hope and a deep sense of longing as I speak on behalf of all of us who are fortunate enough to have been touched by the presence of a truly exceptional teacher, Mr. Muncie. He didn't just teach us lessons, but his words and actions shaped us into better versions of ourselves. Today, I want to advocate for his return to Radford High School because it's more than just a loss of a teacher that we're failing. It's the absence of inspiration, guidance, and the care he brought into our lives in the classroom. For many of us, school can feel overwhelming, their pressures to succeed, the challenges we face, and the obstacles in our paths that weigh heavy on us. But then, there's Mr. Muncie, who seemed to understand all of our problems, the one who can see the potential in us when we can't see it in ourselves. He pushes us, he pushes us not because he has to, but he believes in us when we don't believe in ourselves, but also when most teachers don't. His encouragement never feels forced. It always feels like a gift to us, and I have the privilege to understand that personally. Couple months ago, I got a 504 for my anxiety and depression, and he was a teacher that advocated for me. The understanding of my connection with him grew so much stronger than that, and I will forever thank him for that. Mr. Muncie made us feel heard and understood. His classroom was a space where we could ask questions and feel safe, where mistakes were not failures, but opportunities to grow. He treated us, treated us as individuals, always finding a way to connect with us, but to challenge us as well, and to lift us up when we fell. The lessons he taught were not just about academics, they were about life, about perseverance, empathy, and kindness. And now we feel the vastness of his absence over the past seven weeks we haven't had an English teacher. Every day that Mr. Muncie is away from the classroom, it is not just a missing, a missed lesson, it's a missing piece of our experience at Radford High Schools. Many of his DE English students miss his guidance more than ever, his laughter, and his unwavering support. We miss the way he made us believe in ourselves even when the world outside always felt uncertain. But I stand here today asking you to consider our voices of your student body. We need his wisdom, his encouragement, and his understanding in his students. His presence has made a difference in so many of our lives. We've become better students and better people because of him. And while we may never fully be able to repay him for the way he changed us, but the way that we hope that he knows just how much he loved, or how much he was loved and valued. So to the decision-makers and to those who have the power to bring Mr. Muncie back, I implore you to consider not just the impact on test scores or curriculum plans, but the human impact. We are more than just students, we're individuals who look at those who teach us not just for knowledge, but for guidance and inspiration. And right now, we need the one person who has made all the difference. That is Mr. Muncie. Thank you and have a good evening.
Jen Davy and Lalea Hotty.
Hi, I'm Jennifer Davy, and I'm a teacher at Radford High School. And thank you for allowing me to speak in support of my colleague, Mr. Muncie. I've taught for a long time, and he's one of the best teachers I've ever had the privilege to work with. And I'm just speaking for some students who weren't able to be here, or maybe some former students of his, some past students of his, and even some students at the school who maybe never had him, but they, he, they felt they had a connection with him. The question was just sort of, what kind of impact has he had in your life? So these are just some quotes from them that can't be here to express it themselves. Mr. Muncie gave me the hope that more people like him exist. His view on life, his humor, his compassion for others are qualities I wish I could replicate. He's creative, he's intelligent. He encouraged me to write as myself. A student with a 504 said, finally, I have a teacher who understands how my brain works. Because of him, my life and education began. Mr. Muncie is the reason students like me are inspired every day to learn. Because of Mr. Muncie, I now want to be a teacher. Mr. Muncie takes great care in his lessons and his students. He always wants me to be successful. He taught me to be kind and accepting to everyone. He wants every student to thrive. Mr. Muncie came to all of my choir performances. Mr. Muncie is an example of what it means to be a good person. Mr. Muncie supported me through the entirety of my college application. He has a passion for English and cares for all of his students. Mr. Muncie is dedicated to education. A current VT student said, his class helped me with research and my writing skills at Virginia Tech. And he saw my potential when I was too stubborn to see it myself. Thank you.
Do you want to add anything?
My name is Lalea Hotty. You probably remember me from the last school board meeting. And I just wanted to fill you guys in on a protest we had last week. We had over 100 students show up in support of Mr. Muncie. We all went into the hallway and stood there silently. And it was about 30 minutes. Mr. Simpson, thank you for having, where did he go? Oh, thank you. Thank you for having our backs while we were doing that. You were a lot of help. And it was just really beautiful to see how many people wanted him back and how he impacted us every single day. That's all. Thank you.
Reagan Bryant.
First of all, I'd like to apologize for my appearance. The start of spring sports has caused a lot of scheduling compromises. But I spoke with Dr. Joyce last week, but I also wanted to speak on Mr. Muncie's behalf. I apologize if I go too fast. This is not my forte, but this, I am really passionate about this topic. Mr. Muncie is just truly an irreplaceable presence at Radford High School. As a senior, I can confidently say that no teacher out of my entire 12 years in this school system has ever made as big of an impact as he has. I sit in four study halls a day to complete my work for virtual classes. The highlight of my day was going in person and getting to talk to him and getting to connect with him. He just, he was always there and I felt more than heard. I was listened to every single day. I constantly went to him for advice, knowing he would give me the answer I needed to hear because he cared. Not necessarily the answer I always wanted to hear, but he cared enough to give me practical and real advice. I didn't always get that from anyone else. He continues to set a positive example for his students in so many ways. In a school of veteran teachers, he brought a refreshing perspective to his students. His teaching style encouraged his students to think critically and understand the importance of empathy. He embodies so many qualities that inspire his students. He is open-minded, dedicated, smart, creative, and emotionally intelligent. These qualities are what made his classroom a true safe space for his students. It's time he has, he has repaid for his compassion and commitment to his students by administrators who should appreciate all he does for their community they represent. All I ask is that the school board remains open-minded and objective while making this decision, just as Mr. Muncie himself would do in your shoes. Mr. Muncie's absence has taken away one of the best resources in Radford High School. I just want my teacher back. I just want my mentor back, my advisor back. And I speak on behalf of everyone here. We just, we miss having that connection. He was so much more than a teacher to everyone there. As a student with eyes and ears in the student body, I can assure you that all of his students feel the exact same and that his return would be received with full support. And his absence, we've all been left kind of struggling, but as Colin, wherever he went to, acknowledged that it really has united us all in favor of him and in support of him. Just let him finish what he started. He's taught some of the seniors in my class since freshman year. He deserves to watch them walk the stage. Let him finish what he started. Please understand that we would not only be losing a really good teacher, but a very, very good man. Thank you for your time.
Bridget Chavez.
Hi. I would like to apologize because I know I'm gonna cry. Good afternoon. My name is Bridget Chavez. I'm a senior at Radford High School and I come for you to speak to you out of respect about Mr. Muncie's return. Mr. Muncie is an astounding teacher and has been for every semester of half him. He's extremely intelligent and constantly explains all topics discussed in class in a concise manner. He always does his best to help us with assignments and essays and keeps us engaged in class. Although I understand that there may be issues surrounding him, I know that many of my classmates and I would like you to consider his return strongly. Having a college course like dual enrollment English is the best thing that can happen for a high school student, but a teacher like Mr. Muncie is the best privilege that can be granted to us. He's the most uplifting teacher, especially academically, and he always has time to listen to us no matter the story. He has created a space in which I can feel comfortable writing about things that have affected me, both positively and negatively. And I know that there are a multitude of students who agree with me. In the couple of months that he has been gone, I have found it extremely difficult to keep up with my work and understand the assignments and book we are reading without him. In respect to our school, but in the name of standing up for a cause, high school students held a walkout on Thursday, February 27th for Mr. Muncie, in which we stood in the hallways for a class period in student silence. I know that this may seem like a minor issue to you, but it has dramatically impacted us, just like Mr. Muncie. I know that he has requested to come back, to put aside his pride and any part of his reputation, to come back and teach his students. I come to you all out of a place of respect, and I challenge you to find a teacher who will discard his pride, one of the most sacred and likely the only things a person can be left with at the end of the day. Please take into consideration, serious consideration, all aspects and all other speeches given today by other students. Thank you.
Carol Ankers.
Good evening. I'm here to speak about a little bit of a different topic. But first of all, I want to say, good, very good job, very articulate. I'll give a link to my MGA girls there who got some practice. good, very good job, very articulate. My, give a link to my MGA girls there who got some practice at MGA last year with their bills. My, I just want to speak a little bit about the changing to the block schedule and I know that people are not going to agree with me and that's okay, because we can agree to disagree. And I have spoken with Mr. Simpson and Dr. Joyce about this. I just have a little bit different viewpoint, um, about switching to a block schedule. I am a professional. If, if that's the decision that's made, yes, I will work hard because I have for 36 years. Um, my concern is just a couple of things of, um, concerning absences. Um, especially in the spring with sports, you're looking at, I think I counted 11 spring sports. Um, boys and girls soccer, boys and girls tennis, softball, baseball, outdoor track, that have to travel to Patrick County, Martinsville, and, well Martinsville next year, because we're dropping Allegheny, I think, and James River. And I'm concerned about the amount of time that those students will miss out of cla- missing class. Because you have to, that's a, at least what, an hour and a half, two hour, Mr. Martin, he's gone, uh, bus ride that will affect what we will call our fourth block next year. I'm very concerned about that. Snow days. Um, that's another consideration that I'm worried about because, yes, because a block is basically twice as long as a regular class period. Teachers do have to, to, whether teachers are in, are doing direct instruction or a project or whatever, my concern is those students are going to be missing a lot of class. We've missed, um, what, four snow days? And a flood day, if I'm not mistaken, but the four snow days were this semester. So basically, that's the equivalent of eight class periods. Um, I'm concerned about the, the absences that we have right now currently with students. I'm a teacher. I can, I love my students. I, I am very concerned about my students and their education. That's my top priority. I think one thing that I'm really concerned about is the, the teacher's point of view in all this. And I know Mr. Simpson did a great job. And he, we had discussions. My concern is I've done some research on block scheduling and everything suggests that you do need a year of preparation time. I am an old dog in this new fight. I've been, like I said, I've been teaching 36 years, all on a period day. Since I was at Carroll County High School, my first four years, shout out to Carroll County. And 32 here at Radford. We did do the hybrid a little bit, but that was, um, we still had periods. That week, we did three, um, days of periods and two days of block. Um, I'm concerned that we're just now going to be starting professional development in April. And that just gives us, um, April and May. And I know Mr. Simpson has scheduled some really good. I've looked at the professional development. I have, I have struggled with this for a long time. I've had a lot of talks to myself about it. Um, my husband teaches on block. He teaches, um, middle school students, which he says like, ooh, middle school students. But I just wanted to say I do have some concerns about it. And, um, I just ask that you will look at the, the fact that teachers do need a lot of professional development and I do feel like things are being rushed to start the block scheduling next year. Um, I think I would feel better prepared if I did have a year to do more research, because spring for high school is crazy. Just ask any high school teacher or a school counselor or principal. It's crazy during the spring at the high school. And I appreciate your time. Thank you.
Thank you. Alright, that concludes our, um, public comment time. So I'll turn it over to you, Dr. Joyce.
Thank you very much. In your packet, you guys have received, uh, a 2024, 2025 administrator scale. Uh, I would call your attention to that. Um, we have been without an administrator, uh, salary scale, um, since I've been here and before. And it makes things really difficult when it comes time to post jobs and hire jo- hire for jobs. And we can't really put our finger on a certain, uh, pay or, or scale of pay, range of pay, because, simply because we don't have the, the administrator's scale. So, um, we, we took a look at similar divisions, similar in size in, in this region. Uh, we did comparisons with those folks. We had, uh, taken a look at existing salary scales and benefits to see where certain administrators on certain levels would fall. Um, these are, a, a few of the many factors we considered when, uh, putting together this salary scale, uh, including some teacher salaries that also have add-ons that would, you know, make them sort of equivalent to an administrator. Uh, Stephanie Shul was traveling today. She can't be with us tonight. She's, uh, out on business. Uh, but she asked me to take up the torch and I'm happy to do so because, um, while all of our administrators don't exactly follow nice and neatly on this scale, we have to start somewhere. Um, there'll be, there'll be no salary changes. That's not up for debate. Everyone's going to make the money they're making now and the benefits they're receiving now, that won't change. But moving forward, we need a way to accurately post for these jobs as they come up and accurately have meaningful conversations with potential candidates, um, i- as far as salaries and benefits go. So without this, we are, uh, best guessing it, and that's not a professional way to do things. So I would, uh, ask that you guys consider these administration salary scale numbers. Uh, and if the, if Madam Chairperson so desires, we can move this to an action item. But I'm here now to answer any questions that you may have about this draft. We have a teacher scale. It makes it really easy to hire and talk about hiring and things like that with potential candidates. We do not have an administrator's scale.
I mean, I think this is pretty self-explanatory. I think you-
Right. Well, I appreciate that. Like I said, Ms. Shul did all the legwork. She and Dr. McDaniel, um, worked really hard on this. It's something we knew we needed for a while, um, but, you know, it's, it takes time and there are a few things that pushed this off the top of the list, but now it's worked its way back up to the top.
Dr. Joyce, I would just say thank you, um, you know, to everyone who's worked on it. It's, I've had the privilege of being on the budget committee to see it, you know, early. And just to reiterate for everyone's benefit who's here or, or online listening, I 100% agree to your point that this makes us more professional. It puts us more in line with what we should have been all along.
Right.
And frankly, it also makes the opportunity to, to seek and recruit the best candidates possible easier, because we can frankly get ahead of the game in some cases to say, this is an anticipation of what we believe you may fall in for this, you know, particular area. And also, as you, you know, again, to reiterate for everyone, so no one panics and runs for the woods. We're not saying if, you know, if you are here, you will go there. This is starting from this point moving forward, as long as it's approved and, and I would, you know, you know, I mean, I'm always excited about a, a chart or a spreadsheet, so it made me happy to see it. And I, I think it's something that's long overdue and I'm grateful to see it finally come to fruition.
Thank you.
So levels represent years. Is that correct?
Well, most in theory, yes, but not always. And levels, you, you could start at a different level based on your experience, right, and your qualifications. Yes. And then, uh, let's say you're, you've been here for a year or two, then you might move up a level each year. That might indicate a year, but it doesn't always have to be a year. That's why we're careful not to call it years. We call it levels, because you could come in way down on the, however you want to say it, way up, way down on the level, meaning you have a lot of, a lot of experience. Doesn't necessarily match up with the years of experience. Hope that makes sense.
Yeah. It, it does provide consistency.
Right, and that's what we're looking for.
Did we feel comfortable moving that to an action item tonight?
Madam Chair, I would make the motion that we move the Radford City Schools Administration Salary Scale 2425 to an action item for the evening.
Is there a second?
Second.
Is there any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please answer with aye.
Aye.
And opposed? Alright, so the administrator's scale is now an action item. Okay?
Thank you. Uh, next, I'd like to draw your attention to our tuition reimbursement, um, policy program that we would like to present tonight for your consideration. Uh, in many divisions, uh, including some of them in which I've worked, there is a program that would incentivize existing employees, not just teachers, but all staff, to further their, uh, education or, or gain uh, knowledge in their subject area, if they are a teacher. Um, and then to a certain point, a certain dollar amount, uh, considering all the boxes were checked. We, we have, uh, the grade that we needed in that course. Uh, well, we passed it with a grade that we needed in that course. It fit nicely with our content area or our licensure area, our certification. Uh, in other words, it was meaningful, um, coursework. Then the division would reimburse that person a certain amount, a certain percentage, um, depending on, uh, the pot of money that we're working from. And so it would be, you know, if there was a lot of folks that did it this year, we might, we might not have as much per. But we will start out with a, with a pot of money that we would like to use to reimburse those folks for, really, it's, it's, everyone wins. The person taking the coursework wins, um, and the division wins because they've become smarter and have become a highly, more highly qualified, uh, staff member. So I would like for you folks to consider, please, the tuition reimbursement program. Um, you can see in your packet, uh, what an application would look like. You can see in your packet, the, like I said, the boxes that you would need to check in order to get considered for reimbursement. Uh, and then that just helps lighten the load for our staff members, uh, as far as some of these expensive higher ed classes. Um, like I said, it's, it's, it's pretty much done in this region at, at a lot of other divisions. So I would like for us to, uh, use this as a way to attract and retain highly qualified teachers and staff members. Again, not just for teachers. It can be for, you know, central office staff or anyone who's going to better themselves, which makes us better and stronger.
Now, are there strings attached that you would provide so many years of service in exchange for that?
Yeah, we, we considered that. Um, is that, okay, it's in here. Um, that varies by division. You know, we want you to give us two years back. We want you to give us three years back. Wherever, um, we land on that would be considered, because if you didn't, if you left early, then we would expect you to repay us. Yeah, that's a very good que-
That would be in the policy.
That's a very good question. Yes, that would be in the policy.
Anybody have any other questions? Are we comfortable moving that to an action item tonight? Anyone? The, um, that would be the tuition reimbursement policy?
And that is with a three-year agreement.
Three-year agreement.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you.
Alright, that sounds good.
I make a motion that we move the tuition reimbursement policy to an action item.
Is there a second?
Second.
And I'll ask again for any discussion. All those in favor respond with aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Alright, so that now is an action item.
Thank you very much. At this time, I'd like to welcome Dr. McDaniel to the podium to present our calendar draft for school year 2526.
Okay.
Sorry, I'm getting a clicker.
Oh, just to give you a little bit of background of how we came to this calendar. Uh, we asked for c- committee members from every school, so we had two members from every school and, um, two from the school board office. And, uh, they gathered input from their schools, from their buildings, and then we came together. We had a meeting, a couple month, month or so ago. And we, they gave us all the input and then after that, we had another meeting where, uh, we took all of that input. Some, some of them did like a Google Doc or a Google spreadsheet to gather input from everybody in their building. And they asked for certain things. Largely, people really liked the calendar this year. Um, the overall calendar. So a lot of things from, from that we kept. And, um, Mr. Di here helped, helped me with this too, but created a list of all the wants and wishes and checked them off and we got just about every one of them in there. So, we really did, didn't we? So, um, then we brought two drafts to that whole committee. And, um, actually, we had three, but we had to throw one of them out. It didn't meet, um, a few little things that we had to meet. Because things we look at are instructional time for students. Uh, we have to make sure we have enough hours, you know, we can't just make it whatever we want. Uh, contractual time for, uh, teachers and staff as well. Like, we want to meet both of those obligations in what we put on paper. So, um, and another goal was to keep the schedule, overall schedule the same. And as I mentioned last month, uh, we've been calculating our, the time missed, our hours and days and all that sort of thing, to make sure that we are going to be in compliance and, and to know if we get to that tipping point of having to make up hours, days. And, um, we're okay. And so all of that was taken into consideration. So the calendar you have before you looks very much like this year's school calendar as far as kind of when the days fall. The, um, new teacher orientation, uh, is the first date on the calendar in August. And then the start of school is the 13th. Um, we do have professional development built in there. That was one thing that was asked for by teachers. They wanted days that were designated, um, um, for protected time for them to work in their classrooms. But they wanted to know ahead of time when we were going to have professional development opportunities. So we built that into the calendar on several days. You'll see, uh, there is a division-wide professional development on August 8th. Uh, the high school specifically has professional development before school starts. And then, uh, there are two workdays in January when we return. And then we'll focus on pre-K through 8 teachers for professional development on one of those days. Because for the high school, we also took into consideration, um, moving into a block schedule to, that would work, a, a calendar that would also support that. So we have two days to help them turn that semester around, because they're going to need all of that time for that as well. And again, that PD time built in. So we wanted to make sure we did that. Uh, another thing we took into consideration was ending the semester before December. Um, so we could do all our SOL testing in December. And you will note, if you count, actually calculate the days, which I have done this and I didn't write them down, how many were each semester, but there are about four or five more days in second semester than there are in first semester. So we have already built into our calendar, um, an allowance for those snow days to potentially occur, because we have extra days in that semester. Another thing that we built in that was a little bit different and new, we gave teachers some flexibility in their workdays. Um, we gave them one day they could choose. There, you'll see some stars on the calendar. There's, um, a star on the 4th, which is really just new teachers are required. And then we were going to give them an option of a Saturday workday or that Monday, June 1st workday. They, they have to pick one of those days as an additional day than, um, to all the days that are already marked on the calendar. Just to give them a little bit of choice, um, in their work time. So, um, is there anything else? We also have already designated days for parent-teacher conferences for the second semester and first semester. Um, second semester for the high school specifically. We've already put in their pre-K registration because we found that to be a, a problem, trying to make sure we had a day for that. So we pre-planned all of those things too. I'll entertain any questions that I might not have covered. I did not put on here, I will make it prettier and put a second page with all the start and end times and all that too, before we publish it.
So I would just like to say, um, that Dr. McDaniel and Mr. Di and a lot of other folks on that calendar committee worked really, really hard. I walked by and snickered because I've been on the calendar committee before and you, it's, you don't imagine the work that goes into it. Um, as soon as you think you've got a finished product, you go back to your school and someone has a, someone has a better idea. But I really appreciate what they've done to, to satisfy all the masses. Uh, it's a really good calendar.
And I forgot to say, then, when we have the two drafts, we send it out to everyone. The RCPS, you know, whole list. And there was a Google form that they could vote on which calendar they preferred. And that's why I'm presenting draft one to you. I sent in my email back to staff that at that time, uh, on Friday, I think it was 81%. But I'd gotten a couple of other emails or, um, responses to that. And it is now at 87.7% people preferred this draft one. So that's why this is the one we're presenting to you. It's pretty overwhelming, the, um, top choice of, of everyone in the division.
Dr. McDaniel, thank you for all the work that you and, and everyone put into this. But just to reiterate for anyone who is contemplating the question and feverishly typing it to send it in to us, Mr. Simpson was kind enough to be very transparent and say, with the block's schedule proposal, we are losing an hour gaining a course. But the s- the calendar presented does still keep us in compliance with our educational hours, correct?
It does.
Beautiful.
Um, when you calculate hours, you, you calculate instructional hours.
Yes.
So what, we've taken that into consideration. Actually, the middle and high school have, um, if you're interested, a five-minute longer instructional time, um, than the elementary school does right now. So they actually technically have a little bit more time banked than the elementary schools do. So I'm going by the elementary school hours when we're looking at, uh, when are we going to get to the point of having to make up?
Thank you.
That's what counts for this date, right? Your shortest?
Yes. So we have to go by, by that.
Thank you for all the work that you both put in. I really appreciate it. It looks great.
Thank you. And it's black and gold?
I saw that.
And we got the greatest Venn diagram. I'm sorry, they can resist it. Comparing the two.
Oh, yes. The teacher and me couldn't resist a Venn diagram to compare the two drafts, what was the same and what was different.
Love that. Love that. So we will- So we will be taking action on this calendar tonight. Any more questions?
Thank you, Dr. McDaniel.
Thank you. Is this Title I, two, or do I come back?
According to the, you, you can stay if you'd like, but budget's next. It might mess up Mr. Dye. Okay, so it's that time of year. I'd like to start out by saying thank you to Mrs. Boyd and Mr. Calfey for being on our budget committee again this year. It made things a lot, quite frankly, it made things a lot more smooth and transparent when I have two board members with me to talk about the things that are important to Ms. Long and I. By the way, my hero, week in and week out, Ms. Long was very, very important to me as we made our way through this draft budget. So without further ado, I would like to introduce to you now where we stand with our 25-26 Radford City Schools budget. So just like last year, we have things we know, things we don't know, and then things that are next. What we know now is that school and department meetings to field budget requests are complete. Those include all four schools and all of our departments, HR, curriculum, special ed, alt-ed, technology, transportation, maintenance, school nutrition, and athletics. All of those folks had a chance to chime in and, and let us know what was important to them, where they felt like that the money should be spent. The public hearing for the 25-26 budget was in December. Our budget team, that consists of Dr. McDaniel, Ms. Long, myself, Mr. Calfey, Mrs. Boyd, have met several times to ensure the alignment of our ideas and our strategies. I love the, what you guys on the board bring to the equation, because you hear from our constituents, things that we may not have, and we'll hear from things in our school division that you may not be aware of. So it makes a really good mesh. We carefully reviewed the state's budget proposal that now sits on the governor's desk. He has until about mid-March to, to do something with that, so we'll wait and see. I've met with Mr. Meadows, our interim city manager, to ensure clear communication with our partners at the city. We're expecting a state-funded 3% salary increase for all SOQ. That's Standards of Quality Positions. Those are the folks that the state feels like we have to have to conduct business. Of course, as you know, we have a lot more folks that, that really, that we have to have to conduct business, but they're proposing a 3% salary increase for all of our SOQ positions, and we are now working to find funding to support the same increase for all of our positions. So that will come out of our pocket, where the 3% comes from the state. If we chose not to take the state up on their 3%, we lose, it's over a million dollars, you don't have to look, but it's, it's a lot of money if we leave that on the table. Thank you. Also, an 8% increase in health insurance cost is expected. Ms. Long's been talking to our representatives, and our team is looking for ways to prevent those costs from being passed on to RCPS employees, same as we have done in the years past. The unknowns include much of what we're unsure about at this point, being at the, at the governor's office. Also, we expect the final budget to be signed, like I said, in late, mid to late March, and we always trend towards the lower numbers so that we know that we're pretty safe. Our priority includes compensation. Our proposal includes a 3% raise in all teacher and staff salaries. That's our SOQs and our non-SOQs. And our benefits would again include the 8% increase that we would like to cover for our employees and not pass that along. Okay, here's, put on your bifocals. And I don't mean for this to be so texty, but I did want to explain to you that our state funding comes from a formula called the low, the Local Composite Index. For fiscal year '22, '23, and '24, it was .2395. We included that to show you that what we're in now, our LCI, is .1658. So that's dropped significantly. We had that conversation last year. Basically, what that means is that the city of Radford does not have the same ability to pay for education as other localities might have. Each locality's index is adjusted to maintain an overall statewide formula where local share is at or about 45%, and the state kicks in the other 55%. The LCI calculates true value of real estate, adjusted gross income from our families, and our taxable retail sales. That's a number that we don't have anything to do with. That number's given to us, and that determines our funding. So, now look at there, Ms. Long, those numbers moved around. I'm gonna blame that on Mr. Dye. Because when I, when I shared it with you, they were all lined up.
Yes.
Projected state funds based on our enrollment at about $3010, and you see that breakout there is about $34.8 million. City level, city funding, which is level funding for the last few years since I've been here and before, at $5.8 million. We're pretty proud of that. Our local funds at $962,000. Total projected funds would be a budget of about $41.6 million, and then our estimated baseline as of just yesterday, or just earlier today, at just over $39 million. And look at that total additional funding. That number decided to do its own thing. So this is a little heavy, and I'll stop here if there are questions. Ms. Long's happy to answer them. So again, I request our 3% raise for all staff and a possible bonus that we had talked about as a committee. So raises are something you have to sustain, and so before we bit off more than we could chew, we wanted to, to look at the possibility of a bonus coming up in the fall, where that's a, an increase, not an increase in salary, but that's a bump in salary that we don't have to sustain year in and year out. It does about the same thing, in essence, but it's something that we don't have to, we don't necessarily have to offer that bonus every year if we can't. But in the years that we can, we certainly want to consider that. Another priority is two additional teacher positions, elementary and high school special education. I will add that the state has kicked in more special ed money this year, and we appreciate that. Also, our IEPs drive the need for special education staff. So between the state kicking in a little bit more money for Radford City and our IEP numbers, we feel like that we could certainly take advantage of two additional teachers. We would like for this budget to consider a new instructional coach. That person would work mostly with teachers by modeling lesson planning, modeling instructional delivery, modeling classroom management for our new and newer teachers. It's all in an effort to keep our teachers here and to make the new ones even better. We would like to consider a new, the increase in literacy coordinator contract from 11 to 12 months, because the Virginia Literacy Act has now become much more robust. You'll learn soon that it's going to start pulling in middle school teachers and students. So we feel like that the, the job that Ms. Cox does is more than an 11-month contract. It should be an all-year-long job. I'm sure she has the work to fill it up now. We would just like to make her whole by increasing her contractual month from 11 to 12.
And are there funds from the all-in that help to?
Yes, ma'am.
To fund, to fund that?
Yes. The state was very generous with our all-in funding, and we still have quite a bit of funding left in that, in that bucket, we'll call it, so we will absolutely take advantage of that. For at least one more year. But if they keep, if they keep growing this program, I expect them to kick in more money, but I do not want to speak out of turn. Our speech and language program has grown exponentially with case, caseload management, so we need another part-time speech and language pathologist, and also an English learner aide. Again, the state, and I'm sorry, that number's cut off at the bottom, but again, the state has kicked in more money for our English learners programs, because the, those, that population has grown statewide, so we're going to take advantage of that extra money and hire Ms. Jordan an English learner aide, where we can use that person in our, our higher need areas. 15 to 40.
Of English-language.
Yes, ma'am. So I'll let you think, okay, here we go. Really? Okay, yeah. Here are some requests, additional requests. Our special education bus route is not so overcrowded as it is long. We have kids from all corners of the city, so if you get on the bus first, you have a pretty hefty bus ride until your school. So we would like to split that route up to make two shorter routes, so the kids aren't on the bus necessarily as long as they are now. It's not an overcrowding thing, although we, we'd always like more room. This is more about the length of time the kids are spending on the bus. And sometimes those kids, they don't want to ride the bus that long, and I don't blame them. To be small, this city's square mileage-wise, it can turn into a long bus ride, if you're along for the ride to pick up everyone. Also, additional support staff positions, including a social worker and, I'm, thank you, a social worker and a payroll benefit specialist. There are jobs in the central office area that are done by our payroll and HR folks that are done by one person. It's too much for one person. I would respectfully ask that we consider a payroll and benefit specialist that can help both HR and our finance department get the job done, okay? The school social worker would be a person that would be a liaison between our community partners, like NRVCS, and our families, so that kids with needs that our teachers or counselors can't handle, we can call on the social worker to be a liaison between the family and the school to get the support services that that student might need. Other divisions where I've been a part of have school social workers, and they, they really work hard at making sure that the school and the family are on the same page, and there's nothing lost in translation. So a lot of times, when kids have trouble and need support, it may not end up in the families, you know, on their desk the way it was meant. The social worker comes to the meetings at the school and delivers that message to the families, also with our community partners. Stipends for school leadership positions. Mr. Simpson talked about his building leadership team. I think sometimes the lift that those folks put into making their buildings better should deserve a little support by way of a stipend. It would be small, as far as a $40 million budget, but it's, it's important to those folks that do the work. Also, our Lego League is catching on. It's become very popular, and Ms. Eagle has asked for some support for the Lego League coaches. A lot of her, all of her coaches worked, much like Mr. Martin mentioned, all of her coaches worked for free and took those folks on, had practices and took them to the competition for no money. And I would like to see some small stipend for those folks to help make it worth their while, okay? And then, I'm going to give all the credit to Ms. Long on this one. So we don't have a retirement component to our salary and benefit for our paraprofessionals. And while this is not a VRS retirement per se, it would be something that we could pay our paraprofessionals extra and allow them to take that extra money and do what they want to with it. In theory, they would take it and put it towards a retirement package of their own. We, I don't think, we can't quite pick up a, a VRS completely, but we would like to pay them a stipend and say, here, what this is meant for is for you to go and start yourself a retirement, because they do not have that right now. We can't make them do that, correct? But we can certainly encourage them. Or can we maybe put it into a fund?
I think we need to develop a policy.
Okay, okay, so that'll be, yeah. And it could be that we put it into a fund for them? Okay.
And you know, at Convocation, I actually was asked about VRS for paraprofessionals by a new, new hire. And so, you know, I agree, this is something that sweetens the pot.
Right. And again, that's all in the name of retention. We don't want these folks to go and get another job because the benefit package is better. We'd like to keep them here.
And I will say, in the private sector, and we've talked about it before, it is a very common thing that you, you have to phrase it carefully to Ms. Long's point. You have to be very aware of how you phrase this and how you allocate this, even on the distribution on paychecks. But as long as you do it appropriately, you can earmark this for intended retirement funds, as long as they accept that, you know, they can accept or reject them at their own free will. But, you know, for everyone else's benefit, pun intended, it is one of those opportunities that this is a far more reasonable budgetary option, going and saying, we want you on VRS like everyone else, so here you go. That's prohibitively expensive. So there are ways to do this, you know, to make sure that we do properly document that even on their, their pay stubs, so that comes out correctly at the end of the year.
That's great.
So they know that they have to, you know, if you accept this, it is intended for retirement purposes.
Sure.
And there's tax implications if they don't. I'm not an accountant, so we'll get to that, but...
Well, thank you. Next up, division-wide facility upgrades. There are lots of projects that are come, going to come due, not the least of which is more classroom space at Dalton Intermediate School. That's something we're looking at right now. And our long-term plans for facility upkeep and upgrades, it's been almost 10 years since we've studied what this division needs as far as facilities go. We would like to put down an RFP for that to be done again. So that would be part of our $600,000 facility upgrades line item that we think is pretty important to an aging facility, an aging division. Additional funding to the tune of $39,000 would be instructional material for our gifted program, our art and music programs, our summer school programs that many times depend on grant funding. We would like to not be so dependent on grant funding to have a more robust summer school program, one that we could fund ourselves. Teacher recruitment ideas. Ms. Shul and I have talked about ways to recruit diverse staff members, so we would like to, you know, maybe expand our teacher recruitment ideas to, to more than just the fairs that are within reach, but maybe a little bit further out, and attract people to the, the quiet, slow end of Virginia. And our new teacher orientation, we want, once those folks decide to work here, we want to keep them. So that would be to the tune of some professional development, some trips they could take, things like that. Again, not a lot of funding, but sure would, sure would grease a lot of squeaky wheels. Sorry. Okay, finally, technology and safety upgrades, security fencing at McCarg. The McCarg fence is nice, but it's out of compliance as far as height goes. It needs to be a couple feet higher. Also, the fence around the stadium at, at the high school is, looks old. It is old. It's rusty. It needs to be replaced. Division-wide software upgrades. I won't pretend to know what goes on in Mr. Howard's world, but just trust me, there's something that comes along every day that makes us inclined, more inclined to upgrade our safety, as far as our digital footprint. Special education software and equipment, the tuition reimbursement that I mentioned earlier. And a lot of times, when we onboard new employees, we are at the mercy of the police department, and they do a fine job, but we would like the, they would probably appreciate it as well. We don't want to have to bother them with fingerprinting day after day, so we would like, there are fingerprint apparatus that we can buy here that makes that process a lot more streamlined, and Ms. Shul doesn't necessarily have to count on a very busy police department to get those back to us. Okay, what's next? So March 25th, when we come together again, the school board would like for you guys to consider this between now and then and take action on this proposal. April 1st, we will be sending our proposal down to the city for their review. April 14th, according to my calculations, is the school budget presentation at the city for first reading, and then on April 28th, city council action again on our school budget for the second reading. And I'm happy to entertain questions. And I'm sorry that went really fast. There's, there's really no way to, you know, we could be here all night if we wanted to. Okay, next up, I would like for Dr. McDaniel to return to the podium to fill us in on the micro grant, removing barriers related to academic achievement. And I would also like for you, maybe Madam Chair, to move this to action items afterwards. Thank you. For now, yeah.
So I had mentioned that we got this grant. We applied for it in October, I think. It was due beginning of October. We found out in December that we got it, but we didn't find out until a week ago today exactly how this was going to happen, and they moved it into a Title I, and then we had to fill out this whole new application for you to approve. But we did get $10,625 total, and there are two different pots of money within this. So if you're looking at the application that you were sent online, I'll start just looking at the, the overall budget items. We did have to change some of what we, our initial proposal was for, because some of what we asked for, reimbursement for was the FEED program, and we've done half of those already. So by the time they were actually giving us the money and allowing us to ask for reimbursement. But, so, and they also divided the money into, like I said, two different pots. There was one for, that came under Title I, so we're under all of those regulations, and some of what our initial proposal was does not fit that. And then the other one was under the Department of Behavioral Health and Developmental Services. So the one that starts on page six is the Title I budget, and we moved most of the FEED program over to the behavioral health, because we were supposed to focus on things like mental health, cellphone use, bullying, hazing, all those sort of things, but it, there was primarily a focus on mental health services and family engagement as well. So for the Title I part of the budget, the $5,625, we have, the, the breakdown of the money is on page six, but just to give you an idea of what we're proposing to use that money for, we would like to plan, in addition to the three FEED programs that we still have left for this year, March, April, and May, we are also proposing a back-to-school bash, like Bobcat Bash, what else do we call it? The Radford Return? I don't know, we'll have some cute name for it.
Yes, first of all, we'll come up with something snappy.
But about a week before school starts, providing families an opportunity to come into the school and meet in a more informal way, maybe around the track, outside, free food, we're hoping to maybe get the boosters on board to help us, and they can make a little money too. But would also provide an opportunity for them to meet with service providers in the area. We would invite those people in and have some fun activities for the kids, and just kind of a big community event to come back together right before school starts and have some of our resources available too. So, parents, before they come to open house even, will know some of the things that they can expect for school. And if we have some of the organizations that collect, collect school supplies and things like that, would be an opportunity to give some of those things out and just meet families and, and again, have an opportunity to be together. So, we are proposing for some staff members to help organize that in addition to us 12-month people, like, because it's going to be not during their contract time, and people to help set up and all of that. And then, we want to be able to pay for the food for families because that is an allowable expense. And then, the other thing we wanted to do was create a resource library for parents of books and kits and materials and things like that, that we can connect them with resources they might need based on those different categories. Like, I don't know if you've done any of the FEED programs this year, but we've had topics each month, and that kind of leads me to the next one. So, that was a grand total of, if you want me to go over the individual numbers, I will, but that's the big picture. And then, for the Department of Health, we are part of the funding. We're trying to pay the two people, Blake Burdack and Melissa Gerald, who have worked many, many hours on their own time to do these FEED programs all year long, to give them a little bit of pay for that time to, for the last three sessions anyway. And we've been providing childcare, so a little stipend for those people that are doing that too. And we've also had charities donating the dinner every time, and I'm, you know, they're probably getting tired of those big donations. So, if we could help offset some of that cost, and some hands-on learning activities, and then again, take-home resources. So, we kind of divided the resource piece into the two pots of money. But I think that's a pretty good use of that money for families and providing them with resources, because a lot of the money will go towards resources that we can share with them. And opportunities for us to engage with them, again, like I said, in a less formal environment where it might lend itself to more face-to-face conversations and connections with the families in our community, where they might be more comfortable than they would have, you know, a typical school event. Any questions about that?
So, I did not, I did not ask you, but this will need to be moved to action to approve so that you can sign it, yeah?
They just, like I said, did this webinar last week, and they told us it had to be turned in by March 11th, but that you had to present it to your board, even though they'd already given us the grant, technically. So, paperwork, you know? Any questions? Nope, okay.
Thank you. Probably need to make it, yeah.
All right.
Well, we will, no, I have two more, but you need to move that to action items.
Okay, gotcha, sorry.
That would need a motion.
I would ask for a motion to move the micro grants, removing barriers to academic achievement to an action item.
So, moved.
And a second? Second discussion, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Thank you. So, our meeting is early this month because of spring break, and the attendance numbers are not ready. So, we will present the attendance numbers, I think. Didn't the trophy switch hands, Mr. Keister?
Sure did.
Did it switch hands, Mr. Wilder?
Yeah, we needed to dust it off.
So, on the 25th, we will have a formal passing of the trophy. Sorry. That'll be fun, and the banner too. But Power School needs a few days to think this whole attendance thing over, so it wasn't ready to spit out our numbers for tonight. So, we will take a look at our enrollment report. At the high school, we have 484 kids that attend the high school. 15 of our Radford City kids are virtual. At Dalton, you see 269 and four are virtual. At Bell Heath, it's 476, with eight virtual, and at McCarg, it's 401 with two being virtual. And then, the Virtual Academy, or the virtual school that we, that we host is 1806. So, a grand total, including 1,630, which is up, by the way, if you're scoring at home. That's up from, actually, it's increased the last several months over what we started with. So, our numbers for our in-person residential students is continuing, continuing to climb, and we like that, we like that a lot. For a grand total of 3352. I think you'll like our Student Behavior Incident Report. If you'll go straight to the link, Mr. Di, for McCarg. Isn't that McCarg? There we go, McCarg. So, from January, where we didn't go to school a whole lot, to February, just a slight uptick. But from February of last year until February of this year, a significant decrease. So, good work by the folks, Mr. Keister and the folks at McCarg. For Bell Heath, January to this month is about even. But again, from February of last year till February of this year, much improved. So, thank you, Mr. Wilder, and the teachers and staff and families at Bell Heath. Dalton Intermediate School, January last month, or two months ago till February, just an uptick again. I think that's got a lot to do with the number of days in school. But from February of last year, a significant decrease to February of this year. And finally, the high school, again, January 2025 until February, just a slight uptick. We can live with that. The big news is from February of a year ago till this February, a significant decrease again. Kudos to our principals, their staff, our kids who are trying hard, and our families to keep focus on instruction and not the misbehavior. Thank you, Mr. Di, and that is my report.
Okay, so, we're staying on track here.
We are.
So, board members.
Madam Chair, just a quick update. Last night, actually was able to attend the New River Community College President's Board Meeting. It's always an honor and a pleasure to serve on that committee as well. But a lot of things going with our neighbors up at New River. Things that are, we actually had our budget meeting there as well, of course, and we're going over that. One thing that was very dynamic, there was a lot of discussion around dual enrollment, students in classes and things of that nature between our partners in the community. Something that has actually passed recently through Richmond was a dual enrollment update, just so everyone is aware, and my apologies, Dr. Joyce, I gave you the wrong number off the top of my head. It's actually Chapter 647, not 646 that I told you.
You're forgiven.
I was close, very close. Which is actually in the Virginia Code where there was a change to the fee structure to do with dual enrollment students. With this new structure being placed with Chapter 646, that is actually signed by the governor at this point, goes into effect in June and July, there will no longer be a fee from a college going to dual enrollment students.
Very nice.
So, that, those items are unfunded at this point in time. Our friends at New River Community College, me as well, we're now looking at, thankfully there, it's impacting us around $50,000, but there are some colleges in our system that is impacting them substantially more. So, just be aware of that. But it is a tremendous opportunity. Right now, New River Community College houses right at 1,000 students that are considered dual enrollment onsite. So, that is something very, very important to them, the development of the community. And it is an opportunity that, you know, again, a reminder for the community college, it's not just a place to go if you can't make a decision. It's, it's a tremendous institution that is supplying educated and trained students prepared to go into the workforce as well as to continue education. I had not heard otherwise, but also, just for everyone's information, the Bridge Program with Radford University has been discontinued at New River Community College. And that program is where if there are students who were not directly accepted to RU on their first application, they could attend New River Community College to better prepare them to make that transfer. They had been through that program previously allowed to live on campus at RU, participate in some of the student services there, because it was, again, preparing them to become RU students.
Right.
And that program has been discontinued, sadly, in my opinion. But, you know, many other universities and institutions have similar programs with the local community college. I think it's tremendous, it's a great opportunity for multi-student reasons. I was sad to see that discontinued. But Bruno College has stepped up, and they said they actually have a direct path now that they're working with joint activities with New River Community College. So, you know, one door closes, another one opens. And those students will be actually living on campus there as well and participating completely in student activities and taking advantage of student services there on campus as well. So, that's a really big, yeah, great lift there. Anywho, great meeting, fantastic. This was actually our first full meeting with Dr. Brandon, taking over as the president at New River Community College. You know, Dr. Cooper is still missed and certainly will be long beloved, but Dr. Brandon is doing his very level best to bring it in. Lots of changes up there, if you haven't had a chance, go check it out. You know, you can actually do a virtual tour online, which is really fun if you've never done that. So, look into it, and that's where we're at. Thank you.
Anyone else?
I, I have a couple of things. It was a really busy last few weeks, actually. On February 19th, I attended the VSBA webinar, Understanding Immigration Enforcement and Compliance, What Schools Need to Know. I felt like it provided insights into the complexities of immigration policies and their implications for educational institutions. I felt like it offered practical guidance for schools to navigate compliance while supporting their diverse communities. It was, it was a really good webinar. And it was, there was a lot of people attending it, I noticed that. And also, on the 24th, I attended the Special Education Advisory Committee. It was my first one. It was really nice getting to know everybody in there. I listened to a student and parent talk about their story, and it was a learning experience for me, listening to their experience, and it was truly inspiring. And I'm really looking forward to the next meeting. And then, on Thursday, I attended the band concert at RHS, and it was incredible. I am constantly blown away by the talent that's on that stage. And if you've never been to the band concert, you really got to go. So, I'm trying to hurry through this, but it was, it was lovely. And, and it was really neat seeing, like, especially, and of course, my daughter's in beginner band, so... But seeing how much improvement in a short amount of time was incredible. And then, on Friday, the 28th, I had the honor of attending the Black History Celebration Program at RHS. He talked about it earlier, but I was there along with the students at RHS, and it was uplifting and inspiring. India, India Adams spoke, and one of the things that she mentioned was a quote, and it's, "Home is what you take with you, not what you leave behind." And, and I just think it so beautifully applies to Radford City schools, especially when it comes to values, knowledge, and experience that you carry with you for a lifetime. I am, I am now and forever will be Bobcat proud. I grew up here and just, I will forever be. But it really hit home for me, and I, I was really glad to be there. So, busy, busy few weeks.
Well, if you didn't know, March is actually Youth Art Month, and it's a time when we celebrate the creativity and dedication of our students and educators in the arts. The Fine Arts Center in Pulaski on Main Street is having an art expedition, youth art expedition. And so, that will be available until March 29th, if you have a chance to go there and, and appreciate that art. It's also a time when we recognize the incredible artists, young artists in our school, and we celebrate our fine arts teachers who inspire, guide, and nurture creativity in their classrooms every day. So, the Radford City School Board is happy to acknowledge the contributions of our art educators. Their work is invaluable, their dedication helps shape the next generation of artists, thinkers, and innovators. There's even going to be a high school art show at Radford University, open to the public, March 19th to 29th. And in the gallery, in the Tyler Gallery on the RU campus, we, oh, this is my favorite, the Glencoe Museum Art Show is always awesome. The opening reception is on March 19th, but actually, it runs for seven weeks. And I just love going to see what our kids have done at all different levels. It's just always amazing. So, I hope you, it wouldn't take long to stop in and, and appreciate their work. The Southwest Virginia High School Art Show is the one that is at RU Tyler Art Gallery. And some of our students will have artwork displayed there. Miles Goff, Sophia Publacy, Trenden Morton Robertson, Jill Grimm, and Abigail Castleberry are on display. And finally, the art students at the high school are creating a cookbook with their own illustrations of the foods that they've given you recipes for. So, they're taking pre-orders now, and those are available for purchase. You can, let's see, students from Art One and Drawing and Painting Class has created 35 illustrated recipes that will be printed in color and spiral bound. And the proceeds from the sales will go to support the RHS art program. So, I dropped by today and put a check in Savannah Lehman's mailbox to get my order in. So, I'm excited to see that finished product. Okay, so, we're, there's no new business, really, right?
Right.
No, okay. So, we're moving to action items now, and we've added several. So, let's just go ahead and start with a motion to approve the block schedule as presented tonight by Mr. Simpson. I would entertain a motion to do that.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? So, that motion carries. We also have our 2025-2026 school calendar as presented by Dr. McDaniel. Is there a motion to approve that?
I make motion we approve the 2025-2026 school calendars presented tonight.
Right, and a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, let's see, we have the micro grant. We need to approve the micro grant that was presented by Dr. McDaniel as well. Is there a motion to approve that micro grant, removing barriers to academic achievement, which is helping to support, for one thing, our FEED program, our monthly FEED program, and then other things?
So moved.
And is there a second?
Second.
And any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And moving down to, under policy revisions, I don't know if this is a policy, but 20, the 2024-2025 administrator scale that was presented, is there a motion to approve that?
So moved.
And a second?
Second.
Discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And then, the tuition reimbursement policy? Is there a motion to approve that?
So moved.
And a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, did we cover everything?
Think so.
Okay. All right, Mrs. Wayne, will you read us into close?
I move that the board convene in closed session pursuant to Section 2.2-3711A1 to discuss the appointment, resignation, and retirement of employees of the school board in pursuant to Section 2.2-3711A1. in pursuit to section 2.2-3711A. Item two, discuss or consider disciplinary matters or any other matters that would involve the disclosure of information contained in a scholastic record concerning any student of any Virginia public institution, education, and pursuant to section 2.2-3711A. Item three, admission of students. And item four, to discuss the protection of the privacy of individuals in personal matters not related to public business.
Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And we are in close.
Motion to reconvene in public session. Is there a motion?
So moved.
And a second?
Second.
And discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. And Ms. Swing, if you will certify?
I'm certifying that only public business matters, lawfully exempted from open meeting requirements by Virginia law, and only such public business matters as were identified in motion by which the closed meeting was convened, were heard, discussed, or considered in said meeting by this public body.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Did I do something wrong? Okay. All right. So because of his outstanding performance, and so that we can transition Dr. Joyce's contract to a more traditional timeframe at the January board meeting, I ask that this board take up the matter of renegotiating Dr. Joyce's contract. And we have been successful in reaching an agreement. I would now entertain a motion to adopt this new contract, which the board will direct me to sign. And that new contract will take effect on July 1st, 2025. Is there a motion?
So moved.
And a second?
Second.
And any discussion? All right. If you, Ms. Long would do a roll call vote.
Mr. Caffey?
Yes.
Ms. Dobbins?
Yes.
Ms. Swing?
Yes.
Ms. Winter?
Yes.
And Ms. Boyd?
Yes. And so the motion carries. And we will take care of the signings and everything at the conclusion of the meeting. Let's see. We had a personnel 1.0 to approve. Is there a motion to do that?
So moved.
And a second?
Second.
Discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right. So because of his outstanding performance, and so that we can transition Dr. Joyce's contract to a more traditional timeframe at the January board meeting, I ask that this board take up the matter of renegotiating Dr. Joyce's contract. And we have been successful in reaching an agreement. I would now entertain a motion to adopt this new contract, which the board will direct me to sign. And that new contract will take effect on July 1st, 2025. Is there a motion?
So moved.
And a second?
Second.
And any discussion? All right. If you, Ms. Long would do a roll call vote.
Mr. Caffey?
Yes.
Ms. Dobbins?
Yes.
Ms. Swing?
Yes.
Ms. Winter?
Yes.
And Ms. Boyd?
Yes. And so the motion carries. And we will take care of the signings and everything at the conclusion of the meeting. Let's see. We had a personnel 1.0 to approve. Is there a motion to do that?
So moved.
And a second?
Second.
Discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right. So because of his outstanding performance, and so that we can transition Dr. Joyce's contract to a more traditional timeframe at the January board meeting, I ask that this board take up the matter of renegotiating Dr. Joyce's contract. And we have been successful in reaching an agreement. I would now entertain a motion to adopt this new contract, which the board will direct me to sign. And that new contract will take effect on July 1st, 2025. Is there a motion?
So moved.
And a second?
Second.
And any discussion? All right. If you, Ms. Long would do a roll call vote.
Mr. Caffey?
Yes.
Ms. Dobbins?
Yes.
Ms. Swing?
Yes.
Ms. Winter?
Yes.
And Ms. Boyd?
Yes. And so the motion carries. And we will take care of the signings and everything at the conclusion of the meeting. Let's see. We had a personnel 1.0 to approve. Is there a motion to do that?
So moved.
And a second?
Second.
Discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right. So because of his outstanding performance, and so that we can transition Dr. Joyce's contract to a more traditional timeframe at the January board meeting, I ask that this board take up the matter of renegotiating Dr. Joyce's contract. And we have been successful in reaching an agreement. I would now entertain a motion to adopt this new contract, which the board will direct me to sign. And that new contract will take effect on July 1st, 2025. Is there a motion?
So moved.
And a second?
Second.
And any discussion? All right. If you, Ms. Long would do a roll call vote.
Mr. Caffey?
Yes.
Ms. Dobbins?
Yes.
Ms. Swing?
Yes.
Ms. Winter?
Yes.
And Ms. Boyd?
Yes. And so the motion carries. And we will take care of the signings and everything at the conclusion of the meeting. Let's see. We had a personnel 1.0 to approve. Is there a motion to do that?
So moved.
And a second?
Second.
Discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right. So because of his outstanding performance, and so that we can transition Dr. Joyce's contract to a more traditional timeframe at the January board meeting, I ask that this board take up the matter of renegotiating Dr. Joyce's contract. And we have been successful in reaching an agreement. I would now entertain a motion to adopt this new contract, which the board will direct me to sign. And that new contract will take effect on July 1st, 2025. Is there a motion?
So moved.
And a second?
Second.
And any discussion? All right. If you, Ms. Long would do a roll call vote.
Mr. Caffey?
Yes.
Ms. Dobbins?
Yes.
Ms. Swing?
Yes.
Ms. Winter?
Yes.
And Ms. Boyd?
Yes. And so the motion carries. And we will take care of the signings and everything at the conclusion of the meeting. Let's see. We had a personnel 1.0 to approve. Is there a motion to do that?
So moved.
And a second?
Second.
Discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right. So because of his outstanding performance, and so that we can transition Dr. Joyce's contract to a more traditional timeframe at the January board meeting, I ask that this board take up the matter of renegotiating Dr. Joyce's contract. And we have been successful in reaching an agreement. I would now entertain a motion to adopt this new contract, which the board will direct me to sign. And that new contract will take effect on July 1st, 2025. Is there a motion?
So moved.
And a second?
Second.
And any discussion? All right. If you, Ms. Long would do a roll call vote.
Mr. Caffey?
Yes.
Ms. Dobbins?
Yes.
Ms. Swing?
Yes.
Ms. Winter?
Yes.
And Ms. Boyd?
Yes. And so the motion carries. And we will take care of the signings and everything at the conclusion of the meeting. Let's see. We had a personnel 1.0 to approve. Is there a motion to do that?
So moved.
And a second?
Second.
Discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right. So because of his outstanding performance, and so that we can transition Dr. Joyce's contract to a more traditional timeframe at the January board meeting, I ask that this board take up the matter of renegotiating Dr. Joyce's contract. And we have been successful in reaching an agreement. I would now entertain a motion to adopt this new contract, which the board will direct me to sign. And that new contract will take effect on July 1st, 2025. Is there a motion?
So moved.
And a second?
Second.
And any discussion? All right. If you, Ms. Long would do a roll call vote.
Mr. Caffey?
Yes.
Ms. Dobbins?
Yes.
Ms. Swing?
Yes.
Ms. Winter?
Yes.
And Ms. Boyd?
Yes. And so the motion carries. And we will take care of the signings and everything at the conclusion of the meeting. Let's see. We had a personnel 1.0 to approve. Is there a motion to do that?
So moved.
And a second?
Second.
Discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right. So because of his outstanding performance, and so that we can transition Dr. Joyce's contract to a more traditional timeframe at the January board meeting, I ask that this board take up the matter of renegotiating Dr. Joyce's contract. And we have been successful in reaching an agreement. I would now entertain a motion to adopt this new contract, which the board will direct me to sign. And that new contract will take effect on July 1st, 2025. Is there a motion?
So moved.
And a second?
Second.
And any discussion? All right. If you, Ms. Long would do a roll call vote.
Mr. Caffey?
Yes.
Ms. Dobbins?
Yes.
Ms. Swing?
Yes.
Ms. Winter?
Yes.
And Ms. Boyd?
Yes. And so the motion carries. And we will take care of the signings and everything at the conclusion of the meeting. Let's see. We had a personnel 1.0 to approve. Is there a motion to do that?
So moved.
And a second?
Second.
Discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right. So because of his outstanding performance, and so that we can transition Dr. Joyce's contract to a more traditional timeframe at the January board meeting, I ask that this board take up the matter of renegotiating Dr. Joyce's contract. And we have been successful in reaching an agreement. I would now entertain a motion to adopt this new contract, which the board will direct me to sign. And that new contract will take effect on July 1st, 2025. Is there a motion?
So moved.
And a second?
Second.
And any discussion? All right. If you, Ms. Long would do a roll call vote.
Mr. Caffey?
Yes.
Ms. Dobbins?
Yes.
Ms. Swing?
Yes.
Ms. Winter?
Yes.
And Ms. Boyd?
Yes. And so the motion carries. And we will take care of the signings and everything at the conclusion of the meeting. Let's see. We had a personnel 1.0 to approve. Is there a motion to do that?
So moved.
And a second?
Second.
Discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right. So because of his outstanding performance, and so that we can transition Dr. Joyce's contract to a more traditional timeframe at the January board meeting, I ask that this board take up the matter of renegotiating Dr. Joyce's contract. And we have been successful in reaching an agreement. I would now entertain a motion to adopt this new contract, which the board will direct me to sign. And that new contract will take effect on July 1st, 2025. Is there a motion?
So moved.
And a second?
Second.
And any discussion? All right. If you, Ms. Long would do a roll call vote.
Mr. Caffey?
Yes.
Ms. Dobbins?
Yes.
Ms. Swing?
Yes.
Ms. Winter?
Yes.
And Ms. Boyd?
Yes. And so the motion carries. And we will take care of the signings and everything at the conclusion of the meeting. Let's see. We had a personnel 1.0 to approve. Is there a motion to do that?
So moved.
And a second?
Second.
Discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right. That motion carries. Well, I think this concludes our meeting for tonight. I want to remind you that the date for the next school board meeting will be March 25th, 2025 as we continue through the budget process. It will be at 6 o'clock at the school administration building. We thank you for joining us and hope you have a good evening. This meeting is adjourned.